This is not ours. This is the former EDC CDC's website, not the county's. Our tab allows it to click on that, but it's not maintained by us.
When you hit economic development, this is the only thing that'll appear on the page.
I understand. And when you're in that first homepage, that's our website, but this link that you're clicking on is not our website. We have no control over this site.
Well, I think it's...I don't think it's true. I don't think it's been true. And, you know, it's just that it gives people a false... Somebody would move here thinking there's 702, three jobs created over the last two, three years. I mean, it's just amazing. Amazing that we can't have the right... You know, it should be correct. It shouldn't be false.
I've never worked with them. This was all CDC/EDC. This has nothing to do with the website that we paid for.
This was put on years ago.
The website we paid for is not this.
It's probably just being maintained as part of the program years ago when the EDC CDC were...
I know, but if you stop paying for it, it goes away. Then he'll keep doing it.
There's nobody able to eliminate the link, though. You should be able to...
I'm trying to get this off...I can get this off of ours. It's just a blank page. But we're trying to get something to switch over to, so that, you know, send it to Target Alpina. Coming up with wording as to why if you click on Prescott, you're gonna see Alpina. I've been working with that with Jeanette and Jim for a couple of months.
But, yeah, this definitely is, you know, this is bad information. There's misleading and false, and it shouldn't be able to be linked to our page.
It's like Wikipedia. You can put whatever you want in there. We don't control this website.
No, but there shouldn't be a link from our website to this.
Right. Thanks for calling our attention.
Well, it's just part of my preparing for a down hall meeting, that's all.
Again, thanks for bringing it to our attention. But the explanation we're hearing is that we're going to try to...
We have been trying to get rid of that.
Get rid of that link from that website. Anything else?
No.
I think there have been more than three jobs in the last three years.
Yes, more than three, but not 703.
No.
There's only 340 non-farm business units, non-farm establishments in the whole county. So if they all hired two people, they would still be more than that, so...
Other citizens appearing for the board?
I have some pamphlets here I would like to give to each one of you, if that's okay.
Your name?
Jim McKendles, under the village of Township. I have one for you folks, too. The reason I've given these to you, I...we had a little bit of a discussion after the meeting out in the parking lot about grants and how wonderful they are. We're...a lot of us don't think that grants are a good thing for we, the people in general. And if you go through this book, it doesn't specifically talk about grants, per se, but it talks about the role of good government in just seven little tiny steps. And I thought it was worthy. Mackinac Center is a think tank that is devoted to a lot of freedom issues. There's a lot of things in there that are very important that, you know, you took an oath of office to perform a lot of what's in there. And the grant thing is not really part of it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Any other citizens appearing for the board?
My name is Suzie Bruder. I'm from Onaway. I'm just wondering if we've made...
Suzie...
Bruder from Onaway. I'm just wondering if we've made any leeway with getting the ban on wood stoves taken out because it is completely unconstitutional?
No.
We've not talked about it or anything? We've just been wasting our time here?
No, I mean, we haven't talked about saying it's unconstitutional. I guess that's up to you to prove to us that it's unconstitutional.
We did last time we were here.
I recall that. We talked to our attorney here to give us, you know, some legal advice on it, and that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
I see.
Ma'am, the proper way to challenge it would be a court case and have a judge make a decision whether or not it's constitutional or not. This legislative body doesn't have the ability to say that something's constitutional.
Didn't this group here decide that it was okay to ban wood stoves?
I'm not familiar with that.
Put regulations on it.
Okay, put regulations on the wood stoves, not allowing people to have them if they don't have an acre between themselves and their neighbor? Wasn't it this group?
The ordinance was established, okay, a year or so ago. And this amendment to the ordinance actually lessens the restrictions on people that want to put a wood stove in.
But there's still restrictions on how to heat your home in northern Michigan.
Well, I'm not gonna debate how you're gonna heat your home. It's everyone's option, I guess, or if they have the opportunity and wanna put a wood stove in and they're iron... If they meet qualifications, they can do it.
There shouldn't be any qualifications.
If you had wood stoves on every single lot and every single tile, you wouldn't be able to breathe the air.
But there's not.
Wood stove...well, no, there could be. Wood stoves are not...
Actually, there was a time when there was. Actually, there was a time when there was, and they breathed just fine.
You think? You think?
Our parents are all still alive.
Well, to answer your question, first of all, you know, we didn't...we're not looking at this as being unconstitutional. I mean, a lot of municipalities pass ordinances all the time. I mean, you know, there's an ordinance to you can't park your car on the street in the wintertime so the flowers can flow. I mean, it's a common sense thing. That's what this ordinance concerning wood stoves basically amounts to. It's a common sense thing that if you have a certain amount of property, you can have one. And if you don't have that amount of property, it gives the building official the permission to go out there and say, "Well, there's no neighbors close by. You can go ahead and put your wood stove in." It's making the thing less restrictive. Now, I don't know where you get that...
How is it constitutional? If you can't tell me how it's not constitutional, then please tell me how it is constitutional. Tell someone how they can and cannot heat their homes in the winter here in northern Michigan.
There are other alternatives.
We had a propane shortage last year.
You can heat your house with an interior wood stove, combination wood stove, gas stove, correct?
But we can't get insurance that way. Insurance doesn't want to insure your house if you have a wood stove in your house. We fought with insurance over that before.
A wood stove or a fireplace insert or...I'm not gonna argue the fact that you can't get insurance. But I'm thinking in some instances you can, because I know in...
If you pay a lot more.
In Rogers City, it is...the ordinance says we cannot have those outdoor wood burning stoves. City of Onaway cannot...the ordinance says you cannot have an outdoor wood burning stove in the city of Onaway. The village of Posen, you cannot in the village of Posen have a wood burning stove outside. Now, it...right, for...right. Now, in...
Millersburg.
But in the city, in Millersburg, I think it's the same.
You can have them anywhere you want.
In Millersburg, I'm not...
Yes, in Millersburg.
Okay, so they don't have an ordinance there?
Right.
Okay, so that would supersede, I guess, the counties. If they got their village...what did it jump? If they got...
The county zoning department has no jurisdiction.
Over a village or a city, correct?
No, it has no jurisdiction in the village of Millersburg.
Correct, right, right. So all I can say is you find your other alternatives if you're living outside of a city. And if you don't, by the guidelines that the planning commission has given us now, and they have, it's less restrictive now. I guess, I don't know. It's not unconstitutional, I'm trying to tell you, because if the city can do it, the township, I mean, the villages can do it. What is the difference between us regulating the county, the rest of the county?
I didn't say that was constitutional either. You don't have the fundamental right to heat your home?
Either or. They're not going to city council meetings complaining.
I don't live in the city. I wouldn't go to their city council meetings. I'm here talking to you.
So we're trying to make the laws to meet, you know, everybody's.
Okay, but wasn't this ordinance brought about because a few people complained? And then no complaints were actually documented so that we couldn't go and actually work things out amongst people? You know, hire your staff or what have you? Because I would really like to see that list.
There was a public hearing when they brought the ordinance out.
And there was no list, I've asked.
I'm telling you, there was a public hearing, okay? And there's been a public hearing for this amendment to this ordinance. And there's nothing that we're gonna determine here that says it's constitutional or unconstitutional. I don't even wanna argue that. I'm telling you that they've made the thing less restrictive. If you are in compliance with how you can put a wood stove in, what are you bitching about?
Excuse me?
What's your beef?
My beef is that I would like for my children to be able to move up here with me when they're all done and grown and be able to fundamentally heat their home in any way they see fit. That's my problem. That's my...
And they can. Why can't they?
They can.
As long as they...
As long as they jump through your hoops.
So whereabouts in Onaway do you live?
What does that matter?
Well, I'm asking. Do you live in the city of Onaway, citizens?
I do not. That's why I'm not at their city meeting.
So you want a development that houses are closer together in a township someplace that you are moving 150 feet?
No, actually, we fit all qualifications for...
Well, then you should be able to do it.
I think everybody should be able to.
Everyone, not just me, not just him, not just you.
There shouldn't be restrictions on something as simple as heating your home.
The ones that people that haven't were grandfathered in. I mean, you don't have to go and get a mechanical permit, electrical, et cetera.
Yes, you do.
Well, now you do.
Now, if...
Right, before you did.
If your grandfather had. And if you fit in the parameters of that ordinance, and we're trying to make it less restrictive, I just can't understand. I guess I'll refer to Mr. Zakszewski.
Well, I had a talk with a person and enlightened me on a way of looking at this, saying that you've got a neighbor 150 feet. That's the guideline, okay? 150 feet away from a neighbor. And you're gonna have that thing that burns all day long. Some of them, whether you do it or not, but some use it all year long because they heat their water for their water heater and stuff, okay? And they may have baseboard heat along with their hot water. So anyway, you've got an old couple, we're gonna say, living next door, and one of them is on oxygen. Okay, and if he has to have fresh air to breathe, and if he's got that wood burner sitting next door and it's smoking, and all the wind's gonna blow this smoke into his house, where he's gotta shut his windows. He has no air conditioning, okay, because he can't afford it either. So he keeps his windows open for the draft, okay? So the neighbor's gonna have all this wood burner going, force them to shut his windows because he can't breathe.
Or force him to raise his stack. Or force him to raise his stack.
No, we were told, we were told, if you raise your stack, the burner does not work right. That was the question I had.
That's not true.
I asked...well, I'm just telling you, ma'am, I don't know who's speaking. Raise your hand, who's speaking? Okay, Rose, that's fine, that's fine. And I'm all for...ask Mr. Zakszewski, I asked him that four times. Why can they not raise their stack 15, 20 feet to be like a chimney? The efficiency of that furnace does not work. So maybe, that might be the answer. You get a hold of your mechanical engineer or your plumber that's going to install it for you. Or we're gonna say the guiding tower, whatever, double tap, okay? He's gonna come and install it for you, correct? Make...see if he can't get it up there to make that thing...I'm sure if we can get the stack up there to the height of a chimney, all your problems might be solved. But at the point right now with the short stacks on there, it's not going to. Because the downdraft of the weather will keep that smoke forever in the line of your house walls and in your windows. You've gotta get it above that. I know one person downstate that, but I don't know how efficient it is, but he's got a 16-foot stack. And it never blows in his yard or the neighbor's yard. But that's downstate, that's not here.
That's the difference.
Right, I know. But why it says working, I don't know. And maybe it's not working the way it's supposed to work, but he puts up with it. Now, I don't know what kind of warranty you have when you buy one of those if you raise your stack either. I don't know.
Well, that's individual.
But to come here and tell us it's unconstitutional, there's no ordinance that's unconstitutional. Otherwise, we'd have people higher government running down our back.
I just had that done.
I gave you one opportunity. I'll give you one minute, sir.
I just wanted to just ask a question. Why you made the law in the first place a year ago when you had no complaints? You had zero complaints, nothing on record. So why did you just make this up out of thin air? Why is this...why did you make the rule?
I refer that to Mr. Zakszewski. He's on the zoning...they brought it to the board.
Well, that doesn't make it right.
I don't...I'm just telling you that we don't, we don't...
We search everything.
The zoning board, if they came with a proposal, then we act on it. And they had public comment on it, and it was here for...
But my understanding was there was a couple of complaints in certain townships in this county. And that was the reason why they did that. That's my understanding. I'm not seeing my cake going.
Say you get the...I'm just saying, where does it end? I mean, is it diesel trucks next? You know, can't pull out in front of houses, can't be within a certain area, distance of... It just seems really...
Well, good, they can't avoid the emissions on their cars and trucks.
It just seems really...
They're coming here.
It just seems a little out of control.
Emissions are coming on wood stoves.
Right.
And it's a wood stove.
Yeah, it's all EPA, Rose.
Well, I just have a question about ordinances. It's basically you pass it, and so it's like a law, but it's county law, right? So doesn't it work the same as like, they put things, the legislature, when you vote, you don't...people put enough into it? They get enough signatures, and they put it on a ballot, and people can vote and change whatever was on the law? Can't that be done countywide?
Correct, yes, it can.
So basically, if enough people don't like the ordinance, it can be rewritten as long as enough people sign and have it on the ballot, basically.
Right, and that's why they have public comment hearings, though, Rose, for situations like this. They know how many people are in a county, and they get a public comment, okay? And they're gonna take an average. And if they get over that average and come to these public comments against something, I'm sure the board, whatever reason they're having this public comment, would look at it in a different way. Either way, it is, okay? If they're gonna go to change something here. But it's the involvement at these public comment hearings that are really important, too.
I could see there'd be more problem with it if there was a fine involved. So we don't, we didn't, there's no assess, no assess fine. I guess if you don't comply...
How is it enforced?
Unless...I don't know.
Well, there's only a building infrastructure, well, you get the complaint, you have to go...
Know that there's one being installed, and it's not, you know, I don't...talk to the builder.
There's nothing in New York to see anything about a fine.
When you say Jim, I thought you were gonna...
Well, do you want to do this now, or you want to wait till it's on the agenda?
Okay, let's...certain that, yeah.
I have a quick question. I'm a citizen from Onaway. That for now on, we should start attending these planning commission, or planning commission meetings to check on what they're doing, because what they do, they submit to you, right?
Correct.
So the planning commission would be the place to start. And then if we see there's a problem, come to yours directly.
Basically, you're correct. I mean, when it's here, it's already been taken to...we've been noticed in public hearing.
Public hearings.
And discussion has gone, taken place there.
Right, and that's why they are picked to be on these boards, that we give them, to take a material word on their decisions, okay? And they research this for months and months and months. They make the decision after public comment, they bring it to the board with that recommendation. So there's no sense of appointing them to a board if they bring stuff to the county commission board then, okay? And we just throw it out the window. I mean, we gotta take their word on, they did their research, and they're coming to us for their recommendation on a vote one way or the other. And that's usually why the way we vote. This one has been published well enough.
Have you ever had something you just agreed with on what they've submitted, or is it pretty much...
Well, there's been times where they come in, you know, halfway through a session. And this takes more than one or two months. They may come back and say, "Well, we got a little problem here. What do we do?" Well, then we give them a little direction on what to do. But when at the very end, we know pretty much towards the end, you know, through the meetings and reports, they bring us back almost every month, of what, the way it's going to go. Yet it's not always smooth. You know, it's not always smooth. When they started this plan, I bet you, you know, they weren't going to go and redo the ordinance and restrict it a little bit less, okay? Give you a little more flexibility. But towards the end, they said, "Well, that's the way we're gonna do it. Maybe get more flexibility, maybe it'll make the people more happy."
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep.
So that's what we're gonna do. Laws or ordinances don't satisfy everyone. It's...it just doesn't happen. You know that everyone's not happy driving 55 mile an hour, but, I mean, that's the law. And with this as well, it seems like they're trying to make this suitable for the majority of the people. But obviously, it's not gonna...the shoe doesn't fit everyone the same. I'm gonna cut off public comment here, Jim. We'll just take anything you have when it's on the agenda. New business appointments to the DHS board.
Marie Lalon's position is open. She has submitted a letter of interest that we...that she...
Is that the only one that's required right now?
It's the only, there's only one vacant for...
Yeah, I'll nominate her, real quick, for the DHS board. And she sits on their board, correct? On that DHS board?
Yeah, she currently sits on.
Right.
Department of Human Services, yeah.
Steve is also on there, but he's...wasn't he on that?
That's the board.
But he's represented for my board.
From the board.
We have three appointments.
Are there any nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
We closed nominations, cast unanimous ballot for Marie Lalon.
Second nomination.
Motion second to cast unanimous ballot for Marie Lalon to be appointed to the DHS board. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carried. Maple Drive easement.
I'm going, I'm here to talk about the Maple Drive easement. That was a 990-foot parcel that was foreclosed on. It's been through multiple auctions. It has not sold. This particular easement is part of a private drive, and there is a bridge on there in that 990-foot easement. Right now, this private drive is the only access in and out for about 20 property owners. I've had our legal counsel look into this, and their recommendation right now is for the board of commissioners to formally state in an open meeting and publish in the minutes that they don't intend to convert that easement into a public drive. They're going to remain, keep it and remain, have it remain a private drive. And therefore, because it's a private drive, that the property owners will be, will have their responsibility of maintaining that. I'm on the agenda for the Kase Township board meeting on November 3rd, in which I hope to talk with the majority of property owners and offer them an option to form an association that would cover the property taxes, which are minimal, and also collect a certain amount to cover any maintenance for down the road. Rainy Lake Association has offered me a template to provide and go over with them. And they can vote on whether or not they want to form an association, and we'll kind of take it from there. But because the county acquired it through tax foreclosure, and because we acquired a private road, I need the board to formally address this in a meeting and say that they don't have any intentions of making this public and therefore are not going to maintain the road and/or bridge that's associated with this easement.
And just to clarify, the county has not maintained it in the past.
No.
Because she bought bridges at our finance meeting. I mean, it's aware of this. There's no house or anything on that, correct?
No, not, it's just a road.
Just an easement road. Now, if they, if they were to, when you go to that meeting, and if they do decide to form an association, can that association buy that piece of property, that easement?
I would probably have the county just deed it to them.
Or that? That's kind of my question. They get it deeded?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Hopefully, that can go on, but they have to form an association, because they can't, as property owners, all of them, we can't deed it to all of them. It'd have to be to that association, okay?
I drove there today and looked at it. Yeah, the bridge is...talked to the man in Millersburg, and he said it was thought it was probably built in the 60s.
Okay.
But it's...
I've had our county surveyor take a look at it. We pulled old plots, and the description and the dedication, and how it's worded. It was issued a separate parcel some time ago, and the last owner let it go. And nobody maintained the taxes, and then the county acquired it.
Right, and it was a good thing. But at the meeting, at the finance meeting today, too, we had Don Smith, our emergency coordinator, was here. And he doesn't think it would be fit to drive a fire truck. If they ever had a fire back there, he didn't know if that bridge would support a fire truck to get back there.
I'm also checking into, I mean, I really don't know. There's no signs as to weight limit. I mean, because it was built so many years ago, I doubt they had tested it.
So that might be an issue to look at, too.
There's no signage right there, right now.
You know, if they got a family back there with people living back there, and a fire breaks out, how would they ever get back in there with a big truck or an emergency vehicle of any kind, other than maybe a police car? I don't know. You'd have to look into see if we would be able to support an ambulance. Does, you've been back there, so the ambulance did go. But it's getting worse, the bridge, so you don't know. But I'll make a motion, or we gotta do a resolution.
Do you have any, or just...
Well, we got, we've got a thing here that we can read off.
Oh, okay.
The legal counsel had a conclusion here. The county will be soon, will soon be served, inform the property owners who are benefited by the road that it does not intend to convert the private drive to public driveway. As such, the owners of the property, which are served by the road, will be responsible for its upkeep and maintenance. This will ensure that the county will unequal...
Unequivocally.
Unequivocally be on the record as rejecting, and this is the most important part, the dedication of the road for public use, thus freeing the county from maintenance responsibilities and liability under the MCL Act 691 dot 1402. And it's never been maintained by our county road commissioner or the county of any kind, anyway. So that is my...
It's built by a private individual?
Correct, yep.
For a subdivision of his design?
If that's gotta be, if that's a form of a resolution, it's just a...
It's a form of a motion.
A form of a motion, yes. And being...
I will second. Who's going to inform these property owners?
I'm sorry?
Who is going to inform these property owners?
I will. I'm on the agenda.
Some of those...
To meet with them in November, and I have accumulated a number of addresses, emails, and phone numbers. When I visited out there in June, I talked with property owners. Um, when I visited out there in June, I talked with property owners, and told them that I would keep them, keep them informed.
Now, you've got their, their numbers for downstate, that if they're seasonal, you can always just send them a letter, or email today, I mean, you can email it.
Email, I've got cell phone emails, so anybody I talk to, or who's coming down to office and had questions, I've taken their information down, so I can, I can send them an email. As well as letting them know, um, to attend the meeting if they can make it, so.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, that, uh, that the county would inform these property owners that, uh, it is not a public road, it's a private road, that, um, we are not going to, um, be responsible for its upkeep and maintenance, we have it in the past.
Nope, we're not dedicating, no. We're checking the dedication.
If, uh, if, I guess if they, um, wanna, they could probably get the road commissioner involved instead of us, because.
I've contacted the road commission, um, and because it's not a public road.
And we got it back through foreclosure anyway, is that?
Yeah. Because it's a private road, they've never maintained it.
No, and it, it wouldn't be able to anyway.
Right.
But it's pretty simple, if they, if, give them the option, it's pretty simple, they'll just do a little association. Go from there, the only thing, if it ever needs a bridge needs repairing, then they're gonna be responsible.
Right.
Be the big bucks for having that area.
I have a motion in support, does everyone understand the option?
Yes.
Yeah, I would be on the record. Okay, are there any other questions, Tom? All right, go ahead.
Derga?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
All right, then, trust you'll, uh, notify these property owners?
Yes.
Of what's going on here tonight. Uh, item three is an amended MSU agreement.
Um, correct, and Kelly had emailed me after she had seen the copies where she had failed to add the four H summer rep to the, to the contracts. So, a breakdown basically is, though we're gaining, basically, what, three individuals for the same amounting, same amount, we've already, the board has already agreed to, um, pay for the year, or back in July, or back in June, actually, when they approved the budget, we'll actually save one dollar, overall, but it has.
Has to be amended.
It has to be amended and signed by the board chair to show the proper, um.
Sign up now, because they got extra people coming in?
Well, it didn't have the seven thousand dollars that was initially in the original contract, it was already in the original.
Yeah.
And when they did the amendment to split it, they had two contracts covering, amending to cover the one contract, but the second half didn't, left out the seven thousand two twenty-seven sixty-three, which was the initial contract in the first place. And that's for.
So that's what we're amending right there, to seven thousand something?
We're amending the contract dated September one through, four, twenty-fourteen through June thirty of twenty-fifteen, so you're.
This would increase, this would increase Mary's job to three quarters from half, half to three quarters. And then also for the hiring of, of two summer interns.
Oh, for the summer rep program?
No, no, no.
The four H program?
No, there would be one for the four H program, and one to help James.
Oh.
Peter with agricultural programs in the summer.
But the bottom line is, though it doesn't raise the contract up of one dollar, or it saves a dollar?
Less one dollar from the original contract.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that as a motion.
Essentially the same, I'll say.
Amend that.
Two.
I don't know the dollar amount, you have to put it right, the dollar amount, I don't know. Dollar amount, and that's gotta be put in there too, right?
Authorized chair of sign.
Correct.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, yeah, the, the final total on that second contract is sixty-five thousand seventy-two dollars sixty-three cents. With a combined total for the two, which equals the former one.
Seven four.
Seven six, six forty-one sixty-three. That's the entire year.
And it was sixty-four.
Well, at first.
It was seventy-six, six forty-two.
Right, at the very first, right.
All right, a motion and a second to, uh, adopt or amend the agreement with MSU and authorized chair of sign. Any other discussion on the motion? Um, call and roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Sorefr.
Yes.
Yes. But she was really looking forward to that, because she was talking to me when we were at, at Millsburg, at the fair.
Yeah, yeah.
She didn't know for sure yet if that was gonna happen then, but that must have been the start of it, though.
I have four zoning amendments.
Good evening. I guess we're here for, um, the two zoning amendments, one on the woodstoves, and also one on the special use on the, uh, home occupation. I sent all the board members and the clerk a packet with the amendments in there, with the original and where the new were. And if yous have any questions, or possibly somebody in the audience has any, um, I guess now would be the time to address them. First, I wanted to say the planning commission is appointed by the county board of commissioners. They recommend planning and zoning to the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners are the ones who ultimately pass it, planning commission has no authority to pass it. The board of commissioners could, uh, have a public hearing on it if they wanted to. They could send it back to the planning commission if they wanted to, um, with recommendations. I believe this board has done that once or twice, um, in the few amendments that we have sent up here. We don't have a whole bunch coming up here. The Woodstove Ordinance was adopted by complaints, no, I did not write down a list of complaints, I never do. I was always told by legal counsel that I, I don't have to, and probably I shouldn't, because it just causes more trouble. And this amendment now is to lessen up the requirements in agricultural and forest and recreation zoned areas. It will not change anything in the residential areas of the county. Now, Presqueo County zoning does not have any enforcement authority in Presqueo Township, Craco Township, Alice Township, City of Onaway, City of Roger City, and the two villages. Just in the other townships. If zoning is not, you know, um, regarding the question of if it's unconstitutional or constitutional, um, zoning is permitted by the state. There are housing and zoning laws going back as early as nineteen seventeen. Right now, we are working under the Zoning Enabling Act, I believe of two thousand and six, that was after the one from nineteen forty-three, I believe. You know, on the tenth amendment of the constitution that reserves any rights that the congress cannot do, they reserve to the states. And the state passed zoning laws that local governmental entities can make.
Can adopt, yes.
Sure.
My question is, I really trust you, I've dealt with you, I, what happens when you're gone? And we get some fresh, new, zealot person who's gonna run around and start red tagging everything, and, you know?
Well.
I mean, it's, it's gonna be all for nothing, because like I said, I trust you.
It's the same, it's the same with any building code or zoning question. You know, outdoor wood burners, um, they have been restricted by the state since, I went back and looked at some old zoning books, um, I found in the nineteen seventy-nine code officials book by the state of Michigan. Um, I call it the Cabor book, it's C-A-B-O-R, the initials on it, um, and, um, already woodstoves, outdoor wood, they didn't, you know, they didn't look like anything we have now, but they were already restricting outdoor wood burners. They had to have a mechanical permit at that time, if they were tied into the house. If they were probably being used for an agricultural use for a barn or something, you still don't need permits for that. Mr. Prederman, yes?
What determines to have a public hearing or not? Who's the one that makes the decision?
The, the, the planning commission has to have a public hearing on any zoning amendment. If they, uh, after the public hearing, if they, if they vote and approve to send it to the board of commissioners, the board of commissioners can vote on it, they can option to have a public hearing of their own.
Okay, that's what I.
Or they can send it back to the county planning commission for further review with their recommendations.
So if we happen to complain about something, and they see it something of concern, then they can call another, another special meeting, is that right?
They could have a public hearing, or they could just vote no on it. Or they could send it back to the planning commission for further review. They are really the boss of the planning commission, they appoint them, our planning commission is composed of eleven members. I believe right now we have ten, we have a vacancy. Um, they are appointed every three years, well, every year they have appointments, but they are for three-year appointments. So you never, you always have like three, one time you have four being appointed. And they appoint them every December, same as the zoning board of appeals, although that only has five members.
Should tell them too, that those are advertised in the newspaper, those, there are notices that those.
Right, they're all.
There are those vacancies, and if you desire to be on those boards, you can then send in a, a form to nominate yourself for that.
To be on the planning commission, you only have to be a county resident. To be on the zoning board of appeals, you have to be in an area that is zoned by the county zoning office. Our chairman of the planning commission is from Alice Township, which is not part of county zoning. And I think we also have one member from Presqueo Township, who is also the commissioner that is absent tonight. I believe everybody else is from county zoning areas.
Is that a conflict of interest to have a commissioner on?
No, you should have at least one.
Yeah?
Yes. You also, by law, you have to have a planning commission member on the zoning board of appeals. At least one. You could probably have by law two or three commissioners on the planning commission, but naturally, if you had three, they would be in a position to have a special meeting call.
Right.
Right, you'd be in a position to have a court.
So we should only have three, or two. We only have two, with three on that, say.
Correct, correct. Now, this Woodstove Ordinance, if they pass the amendment, it would just about allow any in any forest and recreation zone area or agricultural zone area. That one acre will still be a restriction in subdivision outside, I shouldn't say subdivision, in residential zoned areas. Mr. McKendall lives in a residential zoned area. He's probably the only one here that I would be in charge of the zone. If he could have, if he could have a Woodstove, if he could have an outdoor wood burner, I don't know. I don't know where his nearest neighbor is. He would be restricted to the one hundred and fifty feet and one acre. Now, in ag, ag zone areas and forest and recreation zone areas, you won't need an acre. I already have one or two people that want their permit to put in a Woodstove. Um, one guy is a hundred and thirty-eight feet from his neighbor. And he probably owns ninety-five percent of the acre. Yes, sir?
I'd like to add one more thing, with Nancy's, that you need, we need to give credit where credit's due. And I also had an experience with you, with, through a building project, and you handled it quite well, so.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions?
It's just the next guy, that's where I go.
Yeah, that's what it's.
And our kids.
Well.
Essentially, right.
You, you know, you vote for the county board of commissioners. And they hire me. I'm not elected, I'm appointed. At any given meeting, three of these people can hire me whenever they want to, or the next one. I believe the city manager, Shavoygan, was let loose this morning.
Yes.
Or yesterday.
Yesterday, Monday morning.
One or the other.
In no reason.
That's, that's, that's one drawback of being appointed. And not being a member of the unit. Any other questions, anybody? And I'm, you know, I don't know if they're gonna vote for this amendment or not. Um, we did have a public hearing on the original one, there was probably thirty people there. I don't think anybody left that was really against it, there was a lot of questions on it, there was one or two people that wanted more restrictions put on them. And the way it's been going the last year and a half, it has been, I think, a little bit too restrictive. I brought this amendment to the planning commission on my own. I just thought it was a little bit, I was having problems citing them for people. But I didn't comment on it.
And before we do close, I, in the defense of Mr. Zachzewski, I've been a resident here in the county since birth, fifty-seven years. I've seen a lot of, and I'm a contractor, seen a lot of building officials come and go in this county, and by far, bar none, he is by far the best. And he's, he's noted in the state as one of the best building officials in the state also. So he, he comes with good credentials, and he would, he wouldn't even recommend to this board, even though he's on, on the planning commission, something that wouldn't be right for the people, okay?
I am not on the planning.
He's not, but he, he tends to, means because he, he's the official for it, okay?
I don't, I don't go to planning.
And, and he doesn't, right, but he wouldn't even recommend to them if it, if it wasn't good for the people, good for the people of Presqueo County, so. He, he does come with good credentials, and I, I, I understand your, your, you worry about your children and grandchildren, so do I. We made the comment, and Chris just made the comment, we, we look out every year for people to sit on some of these boards, we, they're getting, you know, people are, are wanting to get off because they've been on it so long, so, you know, it gets old, it gets stale. So any fresh blood that we can, and, and it's a great service to your community and your county to sit on some of those boards, so. I would recommend that if you do have the time to consider that, maybe not on a, you know, it might not be a planning, it might be a zoning, or it might be on, on a mental health board or something that, that, that comes up, or it could be on economic board of some kind. Take, take the time and, and, and give your county some of your, your, your precious time and your, your, your talents, we sure appreciate it. And regardless of how it's gonna go tonight, uh, you know, we're voted by the people of Presqueo County too, and, and, and we look out for the best interests, and I've been researching it for the last month and a half, I had different views a month and a half ago that are different than today. A couple of questions, I, you know, I talk to people, I talk to people that have them. So hopefully, with the outcome today, you know, and, and our meeting, talking tonight, you can see we calmed down this last half an hour versus during our public comment period, you know? You know, we, we also have other jobs, and then we, we can't research everything every day. We get our packets in front of us, we do the best we can, we come here with emotions, just like you, Kelvin, with emotions coming to our meeting. And sometimes they get a little bit fiery, and, and we do apologize. And hopefully the outcome tonight will be a lot better, and you'll go home, maybe be able to sleep a little better, like us, so.
Is there a chance you could just table this, so after you read that book, book I gave you? Because that would, that was, that might give you some.
But, but still, that's a, that's a different view of what, what we're trying to bring forth, you know? Our ordinances are. Our ordinances are not unconstitutional, I don't, I don't care what the magazine says.
If you read the book, you might change your mind about some of this.
That doesn't mean that it's law either, okay? They wouldn't, they wouldn't give your states and your, your local governments the chance to do this if it was unconstitutional. Trust me, it wouldn't, wouldn't happen.
May I also remind the public and the board that we have two zoning amendments tonight? We also have one on home occupations.
Is that the occupation permit, how to get your occupation permit?
No, that is how to have a home occupation.
Oh, 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 yes, work, working on your home, okay, yep, yep, that's the one.
By how the original ordinance had it, it was quite restrictive also, and we're trying to make it a lot less restrictive.
Similar to what happened down here on Main Street, for the daycare home through the city though?
That was through the city.
Right, but they unrestricted, they...
We are, we are making it where a home occupation is a permitted use of any district except for four or five items there, if you unreviewed, revealed it. And, you know, it allowed, the old one actually, by, by how it was worded, even a, a beauty shop wasn't a permitted use. It would have to come for a special use permit
Right.
To the planning commission, you know? A guy wanted to have a little gun shop.
Yes.
You know, I get, I get a lot of requests, not a lot, I get a few requests from, every time somebody applies for a federal firearms license, for them to successfully get it, I believe they have to have an approval from me, from the county zoning, if we're in control of that area. And, um, usually the guy from ATF just goes by a verbal from me, I have written a couple of times. I mean, that's just another one, you know, where I strongly believe that, you know, if you wanna have a federal firearms license, and, you know, wanna sell a few guns or something, or repair some, why not, you know?
Sure.
There are quite a few in the county, most are very inactive, most people just get them because they want one, you know? Some guys are attempting to sell some, and, you know, we, under the new, um, home occupation, there's gonna be very few restrictions on it.
Need somebody to start a shoe repair shop.
Well, that's another way of promoting business to come into our town.
Well, in this day and age, with this economy, home occupations are getting to be very important. And a lot of people can't find a regular job, or don't want it, they're making money at home occupation.
Yes.
You know?
Absolutely.
Any other questions by anybody? Any questions from the board? Well, whatever happens, I guess, you know, I guess yous can, um, vote to approve this or not approve it. Yous can always make a recommendation to the planning commission to even eliminate the entire wood stove ordinance if you wanted to. And they could send something back to you on that order. But I would wish that, I wish that you would approve this amendment tonight, because in fact, I do have
Some, and the fire...
A couple of customers sort of waiting for it to get passed. How I handled one was, um, he was gonna be a hundred and thirty-eight feet from the neighbor, twelve feet of, a hundred and fifty feet is required. I did ask the neighbor, you're gonna, you know, are you gonna have a problem with this? But I'm looking at his garage and his accessory garage that was untapped, and he had a stack sticking out of each one. So I don't think, I didn't think he was gonna be opposed to it, and, and he wasn't, you know? And this was in a fairly residential area, it was in Posen Township.
We kinda talked about that today too, you know, you might look at it, and look at the prevailing winds, and if they got a better setback on one side, they, you know...
Well, that does help too.
That's all, that's all to be looked at, now, yes.
I've seen problems where what's, where outdoor wood burners were installed to benefit the installer's house and to be a detriment to the neighbors. And that is definitely not...
That's not our...
That is definitely not a fair goal either.
No, that's not our goal with this, right?
There's no other questions, I'll leave it to yous for the vote. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Jim.
Well, um, Jim, then, was the recommendation from your board to...
Yes, the recommendation of the planning commission was to, for you...
For both, for both amendments.
Both of these, yes. Yes, they sent it here, they had a public hearing on both of them.
All right, and I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the amendment?
We're gonna do them both together, or we're gonna, they got both separate? Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt the amended amendment to the zoning for the wood burning furnaces.
I'll second that. Discussion?
And that is a good thing, I never thought about it before, and, and good thing you brought that up, Jim, if there's gonna be a big detriment, we can just take it back to, uh, you know, take the ordinance out if it's gonna be a real, real big hazard. You know, I think, now, doesn't that have to go to the board of people that wants we make an amendment?
No.
Okay, very good. So that's also something for you to think about too, you know, if, if, if it's gonna be a big detriment, we're gonna have a lot of complaints, and that's something we're gonna have to look at, maybe just take it back to the planning commission and, and just eliminate it altogether. Truthfully, it, it, that could happen, you know? Don't leave here thinking it's not going to happen, because it could happen.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call roll please.
Shaw.
Yes.
Sarder.
Yes.
Call him.
Yes.
Yes. I entertain a motion for the home occupation.
I entertain a motion that we adopt the home occupation, and then...
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call roll please.
Sarder, yes, Sarder.
Yes.
Call him.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Very well. I have five training for the clerk's office.
Two, please. One is, is not a training, it's on, or my fall quarterly, there's no hotel fee, it's paid for by my organization, so it'd just be mileage. There's no registration or hotel fee, it's in November in Big Rapids.
I'll make a motion, we approve the necessary expenses for the clerk to pay the...
Second that.
...ten section, uh, training session.
Okay, a motion, and second to allow the clerk to attend this training session, pay mileage, and other necessary expenses. Discussion on the motion? Call roll, there's money involved.
Derg.
Yes.
Call him.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Sarder.
Yes.
And the second one is for, um, my staff members to go to, it's a potting training, all about year-end payroll, coming at a perfect time. The year-end W twos, ten ninety-nines, and all that stuff, with, um, the staff member being new to that system and not having the opportunity to train with Mary before she retired.
Well, that's her parent?
Yes, so it'll be in December fifth, Mount Pleasant. There is a registration fee of one fifty, which I did place in my budget originally in the beginning, in the budget area, in which we were trained and hotel and mileage, of course.
Where's that at?
Mount Pleasant, December fifth, in one day, all day.
I make a motion, allow the new deputy clerk... Motion, second to all necessary, allow the deputy clerk to attend the training for potting, pay necessary expenses for one-day training. Any other discussion on the motion? Call roll, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Sarder.
Yes, Sarder.
Yes.
I have six. Sheriff phone system?
Good evening. So I take some time to talk about our phone systems, um, what we have coming into our office and going out. We have three phone lines, um, two nine-on-one lines, and then one line that comes into the courthouse. About a month ago, we lost our seven-three-four-two-one-five-seven line, which is our secondary line, but, you know, after our first lines, it just flips to that one. So that went out, um, so we called in Frontier, and the tech come in, and, and, you know, Frontier, we all, always were GTE, the Frontier come in, and it was a kind of new tech, and, uh, we've always had Archie connection here, and, you know, we got a system that's twenty-five years old, if not older. And he, I think, put a lot of things into that to keep it going. So the new tech come in, fixed the line, but as he was fixing it, I was back in the boiler rooms with all the, you know, the guts of the, uh, equipment, and he kinda looked up at the power drive, we call it, and he just kinda shook his head and said, wow. I mean, they, they don't support it no more, and it's that old, and it's, what, what's happening right now is that's why the two, the two-one-five-seven line went out, is it's running so hot. And what he recommends to us for right now is put a fan on it to cool it off. It's not a matter of, you know, if it's gonna break down, it's a matter of when it's gonna break down. And, as you know, communications to us is pretty important, so, um, I talked to the, the tech, and I asked him if I could bring a, bring another, uh, salesperson and, you know, we'd, we'd be able to talk to you about that, and he came in
Last week.
Last week, Thursday, Wednesday, and, um, you know, he, he, he looked at things over, he took a bunch of pictures, basically the same thing, um, you know, it, it's gonna fall apart. I know it's not something we budgeted for, but it is something, uh, you know, that we can look into maybe with the nine-on-ones, nine-on-one funds. I asked him to get me a, get me numbers together for tonight's meeting, but it was a little too quick, um, so he did just give me a ballpark, uh, figure, and he said from anywhere between eight to twelve thousand dollars. So, I mean, but it's, it's something that I think we should, uh, you know, get, get going on pretty quick, and he's gonna get some final numbers into me. I'll bring that back to you, and then, uh, you know, we can make a decision then, but, you know, we don't need, uh, our phone lines to go down.
Well, that, no, that's a hundred percent has to be there, you know?
The salesman did come and see me after, so...